Hello now.
Oh, I just heard something.
All right, you can hear us.
Yes, I can hear you now.
The frequency Charlie.
All right, it is a bit after six on November second, twenty twenty-two. I'm going to declare the planning mission meeting to come to order. Could we have the roll call, please?
Chair Salam.
Here.
Vice Chair Strauss Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Dahl.
Here.
Commissioner Sarver.
Here.
Commissioner Hubler.
Here.
Commissioner Binion is absent at this time, and then we have our vacant spot. City staff Jason Sullivan, planning and building supervisor. Nettie Brazel, associate planners, absent tonight. Debbie McDonald, planning commission clerk here.
At this time, we take a poll for the next meeting. Jason, are we still the seventh of December?
Yes.
Okay. Your hands that can make it? Yes, we have a quorum. We'll meet next on seven December.
We do have one agenda modification that we talked about that we need to do.
Right. You want to announce it now, or?
Oh, we can. The item. The stormwater code update, item B under new business has been pulled. That will be added to the December seventh agenda.
We have modified the agenda. Approval of the minutes. Will somebody make a motion to approve the minutes? Are moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded? Any additions, corrections? Correction? Call the question, all those in favor say aye.
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 Nay? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Park Commission Report.
There hasn't been any park commission meetings.
Design Commission Report.
So the Design Commission has met last month, or did meet last month, get the grammar correct. And we reviewed the twelve unit apartments that are going over here by the new fire station on that, kind of that next block over. Really nice project, good parking, good access. So we did approve that to go forward. So that was the only thing that we had on the agenda for the, for the month of September, so.
Public comments and concerns? None? No correspondence? No. No public hearing, that'll be the next time. Own continuing business? None? New business? Ordinance twenty-three dash zero two, twenty twenty-two development code update. Jason, would you present, please?
Yeah, I will do my best. I was, Nettie was supposed to be here, but unfortunately was unable to make it today. So I will do my best to kind of walk you through this. I think the best way to do it is just I'm gonna share my screen and kind of walk you through the sections generally. This is our annual development maintenance code package, mainly looking at just a number of changes to the municipal code that have been identified throughout the year that are kind of needed as one standalone ordinance, but kind of as a maintenance package. So I'm gonna share my screen, hold, oh, just a second. All right, so you should be seeing my, uh, maybe you want to X out the, that sidebar? So as I said, this, this is the ordinance, this is our first presentation of the ordinance. The, the first section really does with livestock and poultry. Basically, there's two things that are happening as part of this section, and I'll kind of scroll down to it. The first is, right now, the enclosure standards are over in the zoning code and the regulation for animals is in the animal code. And so there's been some confusion between animal control and planning about who really regulates those. So it, since it's related to the animals, it should be in the animal code. So we're moving those over to the animal code, the, the standards for the enclosures. And then we're adding, updating the standards to, to, to be more consistent with the standards in Pualup as requested by one of the, one of the city council members.
Yes, go ahead. So I had a question about the, uh, I just wondered why are we, uh, you know, limiting it so much? It says only two livestock per acre. I mean, I'm not an expert on livestock, but it seems like, you know, that's like a really conservative number.
Actually, it's pretty aggressive. Livestock need a lot of space, and livestock are like cows and horses.
What about goats? Or like, uh, kind of a big thing, they're, they're coming. And I was thinking, you know, people could pit a lot more goats on an acre than they could, you know, cows.
So I'm. Having, having livestock, the rule for horses is usually one per acre. But that also takes into account manure management, you know, shelter, things of that sort. Even with goats, you know, unless they're the little pygmy guys, they really require a lot more area to move around. It's not just, you know, again, it's manure management, it's shelter, it's also storage of feed, storage of any, any, you know, accessory type things. So to me, you know, one per acre is, you know, it's just like the chickens where it says a thousand feet per chicken. Again, if you have chickens, you know, they first off generate a lot of stuff and they need a lot of room. And especially if you let them out of their coops, which most people want, but then you also need to have room for coops. You have to have room for watering, and if you, in those, if you have fowl, you have ducks perhaps as well. Ducks need kind of ponds or water feature type things. And so, you know, to me, these seem, to Jason's point, I think they're rather conservative as well. I would, if I, you were asking me, I would actually probably make them larger just from the actual need for those types of creatures that live with us, so. Sure.
I, I kind of wonder about a housing development, you know, when you have the quarter, quarter acre lots and such, you know, you could probably have some chickens out there, but that's about it.
One per thousand feet.
Yep.
Yeah, so the, the, no more than one poultry per thousand square feet of lot area, up to a maximum of ten poultry allowing lots less than one acre. And then on lots greater than one half acre, one poultry per thousand square feet is allowed up to a maximum of twenty.
So Jason, one of the things that I was gonna ask though is that most municipalities do not allow roosters. We don't have any wording in here about roosters.
Right, because we're only addressing the, um, the, the, the structure that's already not allowed in the code.
Gotcha.
And, and that's what I was looking at in sixteen oh eight.
Not that we don't love our roosters, they're just noisy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did we ever get an answer on poultry and ducks?
Yeah, they're, ducks are included in poultry. In the definition in, um, six, uh, six, six oh four ten, poultry is defined as, that means domestic fowl raised for egg or meat includes, uh, includes, includes chickens, turkeys, ducks, and geese provided that poultry does not include roosters. Roosters now shall not be permitted under this chapter.
I think you have a hands up on the screen.
Oh.
So when this, if this passes, does this, uh, impede on people that already have more than that limitation?
Y- yes and no, because these are actually higher standards than we currently have. So if someone has more than that now, they're already in violation. We're actually increasing the standard over what we currently allow.
So how do you, how will the city enforce this? Even the current and the future rules of this?
Uh, animal control, metro animal control is the enforcement for the animal regulations. So they, they, they currently, when they're alerted by property owners that they are in violation of the standards, they go out and, and deal with that. That, that violation. And that's why I'm saying is, someone could theoretically have more than this now, but they shouldn't because our current code has a lower standard. If that answers the question.
Yep, that's perfect, thank you.
I have one other question. I mean, not that I wanted anything, but what about ostriches? I, I know that how many fathers.
Emus down there.
Yeah, emus and ostriches are being raised.
They are defined as livestock.
Oh, okay.
Now, the definition of livestock, it means goats, sheep, cattle, members of the bovita family, all horses, mules, and members of the equine family, all pigs, swine, or members of the sudam, sudi family, llamas, camilla family, and ostriches, re, and emu.
Obviously, dogs would not come under this review, right?
No, dogs are considered domesticated, and there's a different standard for dogs. Domestic animal. Uh, yeah, there's a different standard for dogs, and I forget where it's at. Outside of the, yeah, six oh four oh seven oh deals with dogs and cats.
They have so many, they have to be licensed.
They have to, they have to be spayed and neutered and microchipped if they're impounded. There's, there's a whole. We don't get into the regulations here, we're just dealing with this update specifically to livestock and poultry. Basically, to move the standards out of eighteen twenty-two oh six oh into six oh four so that they're not split between, the standards for the enclosures aren't split between the zoning code and the animal control code. Because right now, it just says, here's all the standards, go look at eighteen oh two oh, oh six oh for your enclosure requirements. We're moving those out of eighteen oh two oh six oh into the municipal code. And then there was a request by council member to kind of copy what Pualup's code did for the number and the setting, so we did, we added that too. Um, so this, the, the only thing we're doing in ten oh six as it relates to recreational vehicles is there's a requirement right now that says if it's parked at the rear of a resident, it must be adequately screened from adjoining properties and from the right of way. We just do not have the time and capacity to be in HOA if it relates to where someone parks their HOV, their, their RV on the lot. So just getting out of the business.
We talked about, uh, people up in Seattle who rent RVs to people and just live on them on the street.
Yeah, that's, under our current code, that would not be allowed. Um, uh, under section four, uh, this is a change to our water meter code. Currently, there's been a lot of debate about, uh, when someone is doing a remodel and has to, they trigger the sprinkler requirement. Do they also trigger the need to rip up their water service line and their, replace their water meter? Under the current code, it kind of says that that's the case, that the minute you move to a sprinkler system, you have to go to a one inch meter and a one and a half service line. We didn't feel that it was appropriate, if you can get the fire flow to make people do that. So our standard now will be that when you're building a new home, you have to comply with the standard of a one inch meter and a one and a half inch service line. That's a new home. If you are remodeling and, and are triggering that requirement, uh, then you would simply, you could keep your five eighths meter and your, uh, your one inch service line. And you'd only have to upgrade that if you didn't, weren't able to meet fire flow or provide the required sprinkler system. Kind of takes some of the big cost out of that sprinkler upgrade, uh, out of the thing. Amendments of fifteen oh four oh two oh J are simply design, updating our design standards to be most consistent with the most recent adoption of their national building code and ACS seven sixteen. These are just the standards that architects and engineers use when they're designing stuff. And so instead of people trying to find out where they're all at, we just created a table, uh, having them all here. Section one oh six just deals with a change in our organizational structure. We, uh, East Pierce Fire and Rescue is no longer providing fire plan review services in cities. We brought that all in-house, so we just have a fire official, uh, which is the public works director, our public services director is Destig D. Currently, our senior building inspector does all those plan review inspections. So once again, just changing East Pierce Fire and Rescue to fire official, based on our kind of change. Clarifying under section nine oh three that the sprinkler requires to, things built under the building code regardless of its international residential or international business, building code. We did add something, I'm just kind of moving through these, stop me if you have questions. In section nine and sixteen oh four oh four, which deals with our hazard trees. In the way it was worded in the past, there was a question about if, if the planner could tell, was it completely dead? Did they still need the arborist report? Under the code, you would say yes, under strict reading of the code. But we felt that if the planner can look at a tree, like an evergreen tree, and if it's completely brown, we know it's dead. Or if there's a deciduous tree in the middle of summer that has no leaves, it's dead. So, um, we added a, we kind of split it and said, if you have an exceptional or significant tree that is apparently dead, will be considered for removal as a hazard on a case by case by the director and Destig D. Basically, we can look at it, and if we determine that, yes, we can, we can, based on looking at pictures of the tree itself, we can determine it's dead. Uh, and this also kind of came up with the fire burn trees. We all knew they were dead, they were burned up, uh, but there wasn't really anything in the code that allowed us to deal with it. So we kind of added this additional exception and, and remove that from the har, the arborist standard, which is for hazard and dying.
What is the definition of an exceptional tree?
Uh, that's in our code, it's any, it's any tree that's over thirty inches in diameter breast height, uh, excluding cotton lids and alders. And significant is six inches to thirty inches.
Next. Removal hazard or dying, does he make that determination too, without an arborist?
No, the, the removal of a hazard dying, uh, the hazard or a dying tree has to meet the standards below, which is the arborist report.
Oh, okay, so the arborists would decide on a dying tree, okay.
Because, because I can't look at a tree and say.
Say, I don't, I'm not a tree doctor.
Yeah, but when it's apparently dead, like I can look at it and say, yeah, it's dead. Um, I don't think we should require people to get arborist reports and say, yep, the tree's dead. So, but when it becomes to hazard and dying, the arborist has to be the one that weighs in on, on, and makes that professional judgment. And we don't, we don't challenge their judgment, we, we just make them get the certification from the arborist saying that in fact it meets those standards. Um, the tree removal permit, we just kind of updated the standards. There was some confusion about what people needed to do in the project narrative. We don't really need them to explain the erosion control standards. What we really need them to do is explain how it meets the requirements of the code. So we just basically said, in your narrative, explain to us how you're meeting the, the requirements of sixteen oh four oh seven oh and sixteen, uh, sixty-four oh seven B. And that's the retention and tree credit codes that are down below. Uh, here, because we changed the retention and credit requirements, we needed to tweak some language here. This is for consistency for the changes that are in oh seven oh and oh eight oh. So, uh, tree retention. This is kind of a, kind of a conceptual change. In the past, the way our code was currently structured was anytime you pulled down an exceptional or significant tree, there was a replacement ratio that you had to meet. And so that replacement ratio would say anything over nineteen inches, if you pull it down, you're putting in nine trees to replace it. So if you had two exception, two trees that were twenty inches in diameter breast height, you'd have to replant eighteen trees on the site. For some sites, it was working really well, for other sites, it was going sideways pretty quick. So we, we did some research and we kind of have tweaked the standards. So the way it works now, the way it's proposed to work, is any exceptional tree has to be retained, and those are the trees that are thirty inches in diameter. So that's, when you do the, your conference, that means they're like, like five feet around. So you're talking the big old growth, hundred year old fir trees. They have to be retained unless it creates a hazardous situation or it could prevent, like if it's in the middle of the building site, and that's like where the home would have to go, then yes, you would, you could take it down. But if it's in the back corner, um, the only way it would be able to come down is if it is a hazard. Because like I said, those trees are not easily replaceable. We're talking the ones that are thirty inches in diameter breast height. And that is, let me figure it out real quick. Sorry, I'm doing like four things at once here, I apologize. So yeah, I, I, a tree with a thirty inch diameter has a ninety-four inch circumference. So that means going around the tree is nearly a hundred and nine feet, or nine feet wide, nine feet in diameter or circumference. So we're not talking, we're not getting little trees here, I mean, we're talking the, and that's measured fifty-four inches above the ground. So the stump is going to be closer to ten to twelve feet in circumference. So these are big old growth trees that we're trying to preserve. All the other significant trees, there is a prioritization for retention that you would have to walk through to remove those trees. And that's why we, we wanted people to answer those questions above of how you've walked through this. And instead of doing the, just straight up, you cut down a tree, you do nine trees in replacements, we moved to a more flexible standard, which is the tree credits. So basically, you have to have, um, thirty tree credits per acre, so it's scalable. So if you have a small lot, you're gonna have to have less credit, because it's, it's, it, it kind of explains it in the math below. So, uh, if you have a point two two acre site or about ten thousand square foot lot, you would only need seven, because thirty acre, thirty times point two two is six six six, rounds up to seven. So you retain one thirty inch tree, that's eleven tree credits, you're done. Which means you would be able to clear cut your entire lot except for that one tree. Which under our current code would be not possible. So it tries to strike a better balance, a better balance between scalable and also providing higher credits for retaining the larger trees and less credits for planting smaller trees. What we're trying to do is retain the really big specimen trees and let some of the smaller ones go. And so we deleted all that stuff out, because also like in the past, you'd only get, so if you pulled down a thirty inch tree, you had to replant nine, but you only got four replacement credits. So you were on the hook for five. With the tree credit approach, we're able to scale that a lot better to the lot and allow people to manage their lots in a little bit better way. And then instead of having separate standards, conflicting standards between the landscaping code and the tree code for replacement, we just basically referenced the, the landscaping code for the standards for planting trees. And then we, we changed the, the requirement for financial guarantees to be made required, the way it's currently worded, it's always required. And if somebody's planting one or two trees, we may not require a bond. If you're planting seventy or eighty trees, we may. We just wanted to provide some flexibility so that we didn't always have to require a bond for tree replacement. And then we just cleaned up, there's a lot of consternation about how much the tree cost would be. So we just made it a lot simpler by saying, because if you go to the council, the, the current council of tree and landscapers appraisal guy for plant appraisal, there's like fif, there's like five different ways you can count it, and there was no way which one was better. Um, and so we just made it much simpler and say, it's based on the cost to replant the tree, based on the bond quantity, worksheet for labor maintenance for each tree that's replacement, based on our bond quantity worksheet. Because that's what we would use for guaranteeing that those trees would be planted. And then we added a standard for protection of trees during construction, uh, just because the code was silent on that. We were kind of making that up, it's not making it up, but we were having to redline plans and write these standards. So we just added standards on, when you're protecting trees, how do those trees get protected during construction? To make sure that they're not damaged during construction. There, the, there's a, there's a, uh, instead, we just changed the reference here. Instead of referencing all of sixteen sixty-four, we're referencing oh nine oh, uh, which is that new chapter that we added, and this is in the general landscaping requirements. So just cleaning up those cross references. And again, we don't have tree replacement, we have tree credits. And then this one always was confusing what it was relating to. So instead of just having the suitable planning depth, we're just saying, follow the city's adopted landscaping detail standards L one through L six, which has all of that information and specific for different, um, planting types. Everything else in here that's not underlined or struck out is all existing code. So that's why I'm just kind of scrolling past it. This is just because of some standards, we had a definition of full cutoff fixture, uh, which basically defines what we mean by that, because we use that later in the code. Uh, and what, we also require pedestrian scale lighting, so we had to have definition, uh, to identify what that is. Changes to the land use matrix. We, uh, one of the council members requested that we add cinemas and religious institutions back into the midtown cores of permitted use. So that's what we have done here. Everything else is the same, pretty much, um, in this section. So you'll see all the Ps that are underlined are what we added, and it's mainly, it's those types of recreational and religious and philosophic uses, um, got added back in. Um, and then down at the bottom, um, I don't know if you remember, early, mid last year, we had to adopt the standards related to permanent supportive housing and allow all permanent supportive housing in all residential zones. Um, and so we did a temporary ordinance that allowed it in all residential zones. We have now come back and just taken those same standards and put them in the code. So that's the, the group homes. You can see now that they're, are allowed across the board. And then we've added a definition that group homes shall include permanent supportive housing is defined in the, in the state statute. And transitional housing is defined in the state statute. Uh, and then you also have to meet the, the housing standards in eighteen oh four, which are based on capacity issues and working with these in the past. The biggest problem we always found with them is too many people crammed into too small spaces. So we've added some requirements for the neck, the, the maximum number of people that could live in one of these homes. Permanent supportive housing is everything from clean and sober living housing, domestic violence housing, veterans housing, transitional housing for people transitioning from homelessness. It ranges the board, um, and we're required to allow them. So, um, like I said, this was a temporary ordinance we already passed, we're just bringing the standards into the municipal code as a permanent regulation. Uh, off-street parking, uh, this was a miss that we, when we took out the, when we got rid of our buses, we should have got rid of our transit oriented development overlay, which we did, but we never got rid of this code section. So we, we pulled that out, uh, made some, uh, some cleanup to the codes that were cross referencing better versus creating competing standards. And then parking stall, you know, so there, there was just some times where our code was creating friction because there was competing standards for the same type of use. So we just kind of cleaned up those references. We did change the race, the residential parking requirement to be based on bedrooms for apartments, which means a two or more bed, two or more unit apartment has to have two stalls, one bedroom is one and a half, and studios are one. Just to kind of balance it, and you have to have one parking stall for every visitor. Cleaned up this section, the way we've been, the way we've been implementing this section, um, was it relates to use is not specifically identified, is relying on the most current version of the parking generation manual. We've just now brought that into code, or kind of our process into code, our policy. One question we always get is how big should parking stalls be? So we've added some standards for, uh, forty-five degree, sixty degree, and ninety degree parking stalls. And then kind of a little diagram of how that would be calculated so we can provide better guidance to the public and developers. There is a requirement in the WAC now that every, except for. Except for single, well, up until next year. Every kind of, unless you're a single family home or a. A utility type building, you have to provide, uh, ten percent of your parking stalls as electrical vehicle parking stalls. That's a, that's a requirement from the WAC. We cited the WAC. Um, so we have just said. Your electrical vehicle stars, your charging spaces have to be consistent with the WAC. In July of next year, all new homes will have to be pre-wired for electrical vehicle, vehicle, vehicle charging stations. That's a requirement of the state. Can't do anything about it. And then we've updated our light standards to basically say. We need them to be night, uh, they, uh, they need to have damp, they need to have cutoff fixtures and downcast lights to prevent glare onto neighboring property owners. We've, we've established a, a height of thirty feet. Once again, this is all dealing with light trespass and uplight. And then what we've got for pedestrian lighting and then some standards for foot candles to make sure that people are not. One, in certain areas, they're providing enough light for safety and security, uh, and in other areas, um, they are providing. Not too much light, so they're not disturbing their neighbors. So if you look at that, the interior rear line, line, which is really where your neighbors are. They have to be zero, one point foot candles. Everywhere else you can have a foot candle, building entrances, you need two and pedestrian oriented spaces, you need two. Cause those are where people hang out and like to walk. We want to make sure that people can see, uh. Not good people, uh, and getting rid of the shadows is important. Uh, and instead of having those kind of constant arguments and fights with developers, we're just establishing the standards to, to, to make sure people stay, uh, healthy. And then the rest of this is just how we're going to implement that, uh, the standards. And then, you know, getting rid of, making sure people can't do searchlights or lasers or high intensity. You know, really what we're trying to do is prove it, make sure people have enough light on their site, but not enough light that it's impacting their neighbors. We already require parking stalls. And so we just updated a reference in our code where those standards are. So there's not conflicting standards in the municipal code. We have changed the, the, the height standards for water tanks. Water tanks have to be as tall as they have to be, uh, and it's an engineering calculation based on how much pressure they need to put into the system. And they're an essential facility. So we have just basically said water tanks, uh, can exceed the maximum building height without having pride additional setback. Provided that they demonstrate that they're the lowest possible in height to serve the intended use and their design and screen to be, to be reduced visibility. This next section really is just a clean up. From using stories and feet in the same code section. Just everything is moved from. Stories to feet, because we do everything at feet, not stories. So it was kind of a conflicting code. So we just. If it's, if it's a seven story building, it's going to be over sixty feet tall. So it's just, it's just making that mathematical translation between stories and feet. Removing the minimum building heights for a thirteen feet for a ground floor uses on, in the downtown commercial zone. Uh, and the same thing happened in the downtown mixed use zone. Uh, this was a request by the council was to basically have our school impact fees based on the same rate schedule that the Pierce County adopts. So that we don't have to go through this process every year. Cause the way it has happened in the past is. They come and ask us, we tell them, we'll wait till Pierce County updates their code. Once Pierce County updates their code. For that same fee, we'll update our code to meet the same fee. So instead of going through that whole process, we just now. Whatever the county adopts for school impact fees is what we adopt for school impact fees. So all that kind of goes away. And then the rest of it is just kind of the, the, the findings and facts and stuff. So I can answer any questions. Like I said, I wasn't intending to do this presentation. So I hope that kind of walked you through what we're proposing to do at this point. Any questions? Ms. Hubler, do you have anything? Just want to make sure since.
No, nope, understood and everything.
So next steps would we, we're, right now we're intending to have the public hearing on December seventh. And then it would go to council with your, whatever, whatever the planning commission's recommendation is at that time. There may be some more minor things that get thrown in. We're dealing with some code enforcement issue items right now. That may get tough, tossed into the mix. Just some process standpoints as we have a new city attorney to kind of make sure we're cleaning that code up. So that may. You may see that in there as well in the, at the public hearing.
And, uh, December will be one meeting?
One meeting. What about January and February? We always have the joint meeting. Right now, the joint meeting will probably be, I'm going to go back to the agenda packet at the top now. The, the, the meeting in January, we're, we're trying to try to push to the fourteenth. Just because our standard meeting date would be January third, which is right after the holidays. So trying to get packets done the week of Christmas is. Always just a little challenging. Um, so what we, what we're proposing is that, um, that our meeting in January be on the fourteenth. We'll let the new chair and vice chair, uh, get ready for the joint meeting and do the joint meeting sometime in February. This coming year, the work plan really isn't going to be. Much debatable. Um, we're doing a new parks plan. That's going to be on there. We're also doing. The update to the CEP code because of a grant. And then we have our comprehensive plan update. So. That's pretty much going to take up the bandwidth capacity in the planning department. There's not really going to be much, um, capacity outside of that. Be good with that. So is everybody okay with the fourteenth in January? I mean, it's not a vote. I just want to kind of see shaking of heads, nodding of heads.
January's on a Saturday.
Or am I, did I get that date wrong? Good job, Debbie. I'm glad you always have your calendar. I try to remember these dates. It would be.
Eleventh if we're moving it out a week.
It would be the eighteenth. Sorry, we were moving it down two weeks.
January eighteenth. A lot of heads nodding. Gary, Gary?
So just looking at my calendar, that shows that that's a park commission meeting day.
Let's try not to have discussion tonight. There's a very high likelihood that the park commission, design commission will all be folded into the planning commission at the beginning of next year.
So we'll pencil in the, uh, eighteenth and come next year, we'll have something.
Yeah, there's been discussion because there's such an overlap between the roles of the parks commission, the planning commission and the design commission. Um, and with our staff availability is having one. Commission that handles those same topics since they're already all handling the same topics. From, from a governmental efficiency standpoint. I mean, everything that we take to the park commission, we have to turn around and take to the planning commission. So the thought was. Have, have a planning commission that just has all of those same tasks that they currently have. So that, that's a high possibility.
That's going to take some discussion. Anything else? Will they go to the order? Correspondents?
None.
Staff comments?
Then other than, like I said, we'll have one in this, December, and then we'll have that meeting in. January and I'll, I'll keep the planning commission abreast of what's going on.
Commissioner comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are, since we're back to meeting face to face, are we doing our exchange in December like we've done?
I sure would like to.
I was hoping so. Yes.
Now, we used to one time go out to someplace and have a meal or a couple of drinks or something. Any interest in that?
We still don't do that part. We kind of canceled that because of the open, the OP, OPMA part.
All together.
As I remember, because we have to ask the ruling from the city attorney. I loved it because we cannot discuss business jointly or sequentially.
Right, which is, that's why I'm just like, let's just not do it.
And so, so for our new member that's on the phone, so usually what we do is we just exchange a small gift. You know, and it can be homemade, it can be something that you purchase, but it's typically just something, what was that? Chocolate chip cookies is a commissioner server. Um, so it's just something small that you would like to share with each one. So we bring one for each commission member. And typically we bring something for our staff as well. So.
It is no obligation. It's not a requirement.
It is not.
It's something that the planning commissioners have done. As the team building amongst themselves, nothing that staff kind of participates in. So. I have not, I, okay. Well, I guess Debbie drugs jumps in and participates. I, I have always stayed out of it.
So I just, as a kind of an FYI, that's what we're talking about for the exchange.
I love it. I think that's awesome.
Any other commissioner comments? Motion to adjourn. A move second?
Second.
Second. No discussion. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it or adjourn. Thank you. As I remember.